Please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, for everyone. Approval of minutes of the May 19th regular board meeting. Paul in favor?
Aye.
Approval of vouchers, and I do believe there are two sets because we got our year end.
The old encumbrances were come out of the 2020 budget. The general fund, eighteen thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars, six cents. The water, forty-one thousand, twenty-seven dollars, ninety-one cents. The sewer, twenty-two thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars, seventy-three cents. Capital, one hundred and one thousand, one hundred and one dollars and eighty-one cents. These bills have all been audited and I move they be paid as audited.
Now a second. Paul in favor?
Aye.
Come out of this year's budget, which is after first, general fund, one hundred and ninety-eight
thousand, six hundred and one dollars and fifty-one cents. The water, seventy-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents. The sewer, fifty-seven dollars, seven hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-two cents, which have all been audited and I move for them to be paid.
Now a second. Paul in favor?
Aye.
Unfinished business, by Street Utility Construction Project.
So to update the board, the railroad has been on site this week to install tracks on Shady Avenue. From what I've heard, they're... We've been working with High Liner on fixing puddling drainage issues on Trinity Ave. They should be back in the coming weeks to help fix these areas, help alleviate drainage issues. They're finishing off the final punch load site right now. Expecting and hoping that they should be done on here sometime in July, is what we're expecting right now. That's all I have for questions, Joe.
That's it?
Yeah.
Base two wastewater treatment plant upgrades, we've got the bid results.
Yes, is Joe Russell on today?
You on yet, Joe?
I am.
Hey.
I am.
Hey, Joe, have you had a chance to look at the bids?
I did, I don't see any, I don't see any issues with them.
Okay. So we opened bids last week in the tenth. We had four contracts that comprise the overall projects. Three of the four contracts we want to award tonight. Contract number one for General Construction, we would like to award to North Country Contractors, LLC. Their bid amount was three million, four hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. Contract number two for Electrical Construction.
No. One A?
So one A is the one we'd like to rebid. It came in above budget and after talking with American Process Group, the main reason it came in above budget was due to the liner price and the liner availability for the actual product. It's just not available right now. The prices are in a large amount of flux. They're unable to get concrete pricing for that at this time. What we would advise the village to do is rebid the project for the Lagoon construction for them to begin work in 2022. And they've advised me that they should be able to get more concrete pricing and lower pricing for the liner. And it would end up being more in line with what we have in our budget. So Electrical Contract, contract number two, to SC Spencer Electric Incorporated for eight hundred sixty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Contract number three, Mechanical Construction to ENI Mechanical Incorporated for fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. I would need a motion from the board to accept those three bids and to issue the notice of award for those three contracts.
Joe, can we do all three at once or should we do each one separate?
Do each one separate.
One quick thing, though. I talked with you yesterday about because we're extending this out a little bit, getting letters from each one of these.
Yeah, so before we sign any agreements with them, we'll want to do either a change order or contract amendments signed by the village and signed by the contractors.
Because I want to make sure that we have copies of that.
Yep. To extend, extend this substantial final completion date to be in line with what the Lagoon is going to need. They're going to need the summer of next year to complete their work, so.
Because some of this stuff they can start now, but some of it can't be completed until we finish the actual Lagoon part.
Correct.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept North Country Contractors' bid, three million, four hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars?
I'll make the motion.
General Construction?
I'll make the motion for General Construction, bid number one. Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, need a motion for SC Spencer Electric and Company for electrical at work at the wastewater plant, and the amount of electrical construction, contract number two, eight hundred sixty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. I need a motion for that.
So.
Now second. Paul in favor?
Aye.
Okay, ENI Mechanical, Mechanical Construction, contract number three, the amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. A motion for that, please.
I'll make the motion for that. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Do we need to make a motion to reject the line of bid for?
Yeah, if you have that, we probably should take a motion to reject that one.
I'll make that motion. Now a second.
All in favor to reject the one A?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to rebid it and when we do that, it'll be...
I don't think we would tonight. We don't need a motion tonight to rebid that, do we, Joe? Because we're not going to do it, though.
No, not tonight.
I didn't think so.
Yes, we want to, talking with ABG, we'd like to rebid it again September, September, I think would be a good time.
Are your specs going to be pretty much the same?
Yeah, there's...
So it's just a matter of using the boilerplate?
More or less, yeah.
The big problem is buying materials right now.
How much is going to change?
Right.
So we'll send the notice of awards to the other three contractors. Joe, Russell, I'll work with you once we get advance and assurance. I'll have you review those, but I suspect everything's okay at the July meeting, we should be able to make a motion to sign the agreements to those three.
Do you have anything on the groundwater project?
I do, yes.
I have the correspondence, I'll deal, I'll take care of that.
Okay. Yeah, we, so we've been working along with Blue Line on the design process. I pulled our submissions to the town agreement in town of Watson until we finalize a new location for the chemical storage building. So we're still working on that design, we're still working on finalizing location of that building along with size for the treatment chemicals. We're hoping to have submissions out to DOH and DUC on July. Seeker process, last month, we, you guys approved part one of Seeker. We have not heard back from all involved agencies yet, so we're unable to, we're unable to process any further this month. Next month, I would like to do parts two and three and do a negative declaration and also, Joe Russell, I'd like you guys to draft up the new bond resolution so that can be approved next month's meeting as well.
Okay, go ahead and send an email to Diane with Janine.
Okay. That's all I have for the groundwater, Joe.
Along with this groundwater well development project, we got those correspondence from the New York State EFC regarding our W-28 grant deadline. We're getting close on that grant deadline. So basically, the second part here, correspondence, is where I sent a letter to New York State EFC asking for an extension, which we have not received back yet, but we should be okay. I'm sure they'll send us one. That way, we don't have our project completed by time we won't lose out on our three million dollar grant. That's just to protect us so we don't lose the grant money. And they have, the letter has, was back on June 8th, so. Street lighting LED conversion, I talked with Jennifer at National Grid last week. She said that stuff was, should be due back from Public Service Commission, the 24th of this month. So she's hoping we'll know something right after the 24th. That's the latest I have on that. Manufactured home zoning, I guess that's yours, Joe?
It is. I've gone through everything that was provided, I don't really have any issues with it. I need to get a local law drafted so that you have it in front of you for July, whichever day.
Have a ready to do camp? You have to draft something. You'll draft the law, of course, Joe?
I'm sorry, what's that again?
On the manufactured homes, you'll draft up the law for that?
Yeah, I'll draft up the law for that, yep.
Okay, how do we stand on smoke shops and tobacco stores?
From my perspective, the same thing. I get it, I get something drafted up and do you in advance with my meeting.
All right, everybody okay with that?
Yeah, the only thing I got to say is I think on that one, we just disallowed them in the village center zone completely, right? I think.
Yeah.
Should we have other zones where they're not allowed, like residential and such? Should they only be allowed in certain zones? Which is something we could probably look at between now and then.
Yeah.
Well, you could just not allow it in the VC zone, right?
Right, in the village center zone. Is there any other zones that we don't want it allowing, what I'm saying?
I mean, that's up to the board. VC zones, over your schools and churches.
My question becomes, we've got the beautiful park in front of the church, and we know that... Is that park going to be completely off limits? Because if FFW sticks a sign near a lot when they have their burners up at their end, I think I've seen a few others too, but they don't come to mind, but I know I've seen the VFWs. Oh, I guess...
But they don't actually put them in, in mind, in part. They put them in the row.
Which technically is illegal too. But I have seen, I have seen people put signs in the park, I just, I guess how strict are we going to be or not?
No, we're not allowed the smoking now, no.
Smoke shop.
Smoke shop.
My question was on the smoke shops, or what originally drafted?
Where we're going to allow the smoke shops in B C.
Originally drafted, we were going to just not allow them in the VC zone and then only one for 3,000 residents, I think, which would only allow only one in the village, period. So we want to change that at all, so they're not allowed in other zones too, or just leave it exactly like that? Because you have residential zone, you have name commercial, and you have industrial.
So you don't want smoke out of commercial.
Man, Mr. Russell, I can, I can go back and look at that and see if it would be appropriate to not allow it in other zones too, but we could, you could still draft that local law, correct?
Sure, correct.
And maybe amend that a little bit if we have to?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. I will do that. I would think at the moment, definitely the VC zone.
Definitely the VC zone, correct.
Anything else on that?
So that, I just want a little clarification on that. So that, what happened to the two thirds that are already there?
Nothing.
Nothing, their grandfather, if they leave, then they can't...
They can't back. Okay. And I don't know where we're standing on the, there's that 439 or whatever business law that says they can't have any advertising within 1,500 foot of the school, and they're both 1,100 feet pretty much, give or take. So that probably needs a little push too, because technically, they can't have all that advertising in windows.
At one point Cassidy, their group was pushing that through the, some of that's federal law also.
Right. I'll touch base with her on that also.
Is that all on the smoke shops, then?
Yeah.
I got to pick on you, Paul, downtown public parking signs.
I'm going.
I'm okay. Do you have anything you want to?
What's that, Paul?
It's I'm going.
Oh, I'm going, okay.
Just waiting on the company.
Do you have anything you want to put out on Citizen of the Year, Dan?
Citizen of the Year Award, we had seven nominations. Citizen of the Year is known, it's Josh Fitzgerald. Plaques have been ordered. I don't know if they'll be here by the 29th. The fair has agreed to allow us to do it at the fair. Do we want to do it at the fair or do we want to do it at one of our village functions? It's up to the board, I don't have a problem with it either way.
I thought was decided it was going to be at the fair.
It can be at the fair, it can be at the village board. Well, I think what we decided was we'd ask the fair if they had a problem with it, and they're absolutely okay with it. I don't know, Paul, do they care if we don't have it there? I know they've given us permission.
No, they, I, when I talked to them, I said, can we do it parade night, after the parade's over?
Right.
Do it there, and they were fine with that, but if we don't do it there, it's not a big deal.
Well, the plaques aren't here, I don't know if they're going to be here. I'm sure they'll be here by fair time, so I think in some way you'd be kind of sure at the fair, even though it's not a village event, it's a county event because it will showcase the first year of work.
We still could recognize another meeting after the past meeting, you know.
And we want to do a press release, which we haven't done yet, but plaques have been ordered from Alex Hulrich, she thought they'd be here, but I haven't heard from her as of today, and they're not here. And our first concert is a week from Tuesday, so, you know, I guess, I guess everybody would guess we do the fair.
Well, the fair is the week of the 18th, right, to the 24th?
30th, 30th of July.
So actually, we have a meeting on the 21st, so if you do it parade night, we can do it there and we could recognize the next day right here.
Yep. Good idea.
That would work, right?
Yeah, Joe, we don't usually have a meeting on fair week, do we?
No, usually we have it the week before and the week after. One, a couple of years we have, most of the time we don't.
If we move it to the week after, we can recognize it as a board meeting.
After the fair starts, it looks like the 20th?
21st, 21st.
21st should be meeting, but they won't have it until the following week.
Well, we did it last year because there was no fair.
So, so we'll award it for the parade.
And then at the next meeting after.
Can you update something?
Yes, we have, I believe, secured, we have money left, but I believe we have secured bands that we want. Off the top of my head, I don't have them listed. On the first night, June 29th, we will have the Nelson Brothers. On July 6th, Bill Burkhart and Cassidy Sauer. July 13th, Due North, which is Tony LeBeck's band. Then we're going to take two weeks off for the two fairs. And then on August the 4th, we have, can't think of his name from Roma DJ. And then the, one of them went, that one's, yeah, 4th, and then on, or 3rd. Then on August the 10th, we have Patty Stanford. August the 17th, we have Fred and the Ets. And August 24th, we have Doc Ukani. So we are, we're set, and we still have... And I stopped at the Rick Snack Shack, it's an ice cream shack, and they had a, I didn't bring it with me, they had Flyer, where they have a band every Friday night, and it was interesting, they had the Nelson Brothers as one of the bands we're having, they had Fritz and the Polk Sizzlers, or whatever they're called, Fritz Polk Band, and they had the guy that was on The Voice, Big Saxton, Sean Smith. He lives in Louisville, New York, and I never thought of him, but I, I think if we have him next year, I would like to approach him because he's very, very good. I think he played at the fair a couple of years ago, so.
Well, we could come up with something and put it on the website, right?
Yeah, I can, oh, oh, I, Lee Hinckman has the press release for me of... Other end, all that, so that we don't have to do it, because he's got all the contacts. So, and he, him and I talked about it on Sunday, so he'll do the press release for us, so. And I've already seen the rough draft of it, if I might, it's been written. So, that's pretty much everything I've got on it.
No, they didn't have it last night, did they?
They were supposed to, I, I had a meeting, I was here for a meeting.
They went, kicked last night, they might have canceled on the weather, I don't know.
Yeah, I was just...
We're at the mercy of the weather. I think, Paul, I have a question. If it, depending on how hard it rains, the bands can still be on the, on the bandstand, right?
Yeah.
Friday ads tell us that they've got special equipment that rains, and their owners have told me that. So, I mean, obviously, if we have a complete downpour, it's going to be an issue, but other than that...
That lower section where people step and stuff usually stays pretty dry.
Well, it rained that hard last night, didn't it? Well, I don't know. But anyways, we're looking good. I'm very pleased. I hope it works out.
It brings us down to marijuana regulation and the Taxation Act. Everybody should have a copy of the local law for opting out. Any more discussion on it? I did talk with Bob Mullin from the town this morning. He said they're meeting us tomorrow morning and they're planning on going ahead and passing their law tomorrow morning. I asked him, I said, what kind of feedback have you had from the town residents? And he said most of them have been positive, forward passing the marijuana opt-out.
Opt-out.
And if anybody watched the news the last other night, Water Town is looking at doing the same thing.
Talked to Jocky. That's what I was told, I didn't hear it officially that I was told that. Here's, here's my question. I, I don't, I don't know that I have a problem a whole lot either way with this. I would like to have a public hearing and let the people talk to us, and I'd like to get some of their...
We will have a public hearing, Dan, that's the thing. If we, say we have to opt out tonight, we have to have a public hearing before we can pass it. That's why the town's not passing theirs tomorrow, they had to hold a public hearing, which they did. And we'll have, it's just like any other law, we got to hold a public hearing, where people will have a chance to be able to come in and voice, whether it be on Zoom or in Most of the communities around us, I think, are all opt to know. And I'm here.
I think the critical thing that most communities are hanging on is that you can opt out by December 31st. You can always opt back in late, but once you opt, if you don't opt out by December 31st, your hands are tied. So I think people are thinking about that, and then they can see how, how the whole process moves forward, so.
We discussed that part of it last time on the meeting.
So if you, and so, Joe, what you're saying is inaction forces us to do it as of January 1st?
No, December 24th.
Right, I mean, inaction, inaction on it means that as of January 1st, people can come into your community and, you know, initiate those, whatever process you establish for licensing those establishments. But you can't prohibit them if you don't act before December 30, before December 31st, yep?
Feedback I've gotten from the community is, the majority of the village has opted out, like, tell.
I have to say, I've had one person tell me they think we're nuts not to take it, but most of the people I've talked with want to opt out.
I got a letter in the office I could show you that I got out also.
Well, I've not put too much in favor of it, I have not. I'd be, I'd be modest if I said I have.
So can we have a motion to go ahead and do this opt-out law?
I'll make the motion.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So, Joe, does that mean you're scheduling a public hearing for the next board meeting?
Right, but I think that brings us down to, because the next board meeting is fair week, first thing we need to do is decide when we're going to have our board meeting in July and schedule a public hearing for that day. Do we want to go the second week of July? Because I don't, Wendy speak up, but you guys have to have a certain time to pay your bills, right?
Yeah.
What's the date on a second?
I would say the 14th.
The 14th to the 20th.
Because if we go over the fourth week, that's too much, isn't it?
The 14th.
Well, that 14th worked for everybody. So can we have a motion to schedule our July board meeting for July 14th due to our normal meeting being fair week?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we can go ahead and schedule, make a motion to schedule a public hearing on cannabis law for July 14th.
I'll make that motion as well, just to schedule a public hearing.
Citizen of the Year thing, we want to do that or do we want to do it in August?
Let's say you want to do it then or not? I don't, I don't, doesn't matter to me. We could do it before and then...
If the plaques are in, we could award it the week before the fair, I suppose.
Yeah.
Here.
I think we're going to have a bigger crowd at the fair parade.
Oh, sure.
I mean, cats out of bag, I agree.
Grabbing marijuana here, you never know.
Okay, that brings us down to a local law to prevent, prohibit...
So are we doing it the week before?
You mean the...
The award?
I don't see why not. If the plaques are available, we'll do it then.
I think you made the motion.
Okay, bring this down to amending our local law. Okay, bring this down to amending our local law chapter 132-5 of the code regards to parks and recreation. Basically, it's to prohibit anybody placing a sign on the new four corners up there, which we call the Village of Lava Lions Park. I have one question on that, Joe.
Sure.
We work with the Lions in that regards to that park, and I, at Christmas time, last year they didn't, because of COVID, they didn't have any place where people could collect their money for the trees. But we always allow them to put up a sign and sell their Christmas trees there every Christmas. And then this spring, when they had their doings for, to recognize the workers that were fighting all the COVID stuff, we gave permission to use. So if we do ahead with the signs, can the board, by resolution or something, give permission for the group to do something special, if they want to do something special in the community?
We could do that, but I would want to add that to the, to the law before you, before you add that.
Okay.
You're going to have to schedule a public hearing anyway, so.
After I look this over, I just have to think, you know, a couple of things that went on, and we might want to be able to. The Lions do a lot of good stuff for the community, and we want to make sure they get in there and sell their trees.
We can do that, we can do that, I just want to add that.
Maybe add something, you know, by special resolution or special motion to the board, that we can allow certain things there on the corner. Big thing is to get the garage sale signs and all that crap out of there.
Okay.
We'll basically table this when the next meeting then, and act on it if we have to change the wording, okay? Is that what we should do, Joe?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that okay with everybody?
Would that be along the lines like you do for Veterans Park or you allow special events? Be the same thing, right?
Yeah, but they don't, we already have a setup where they, matter of fact, they got a thing here tonight. It's just, see, you know, I don't know. There's no regulations in the Veterans Park. The only regulations right now, the only regulations, this would affect, this, basically where the village green up there where the statue is, that has no signs of any kind except official signs. And that's just basically was to make the four corners same as that, but we also.
Yeah, what I'm saying is the same as the permitting that you have with Veterans Park, where someone, where a group comes in and asks for a special, so it's, it's the same thing, right?
It would be similar, yeah. Okay, village court. Basically, we need to decide, are we compete the village court? Or are we going to turn it over to the town? And we need to make a decision on it, because pretty quick here, the town's going to be looking at, probably by September, maybe working on their budget for next year. And so they're going to need to know ahead, we can't just dump it on them. Myself, I think we should dissolve it, this is our chance right now coming up here in March, and let it go over to the town. I talked with the police department, they said it's not going to affect them at all.
So I'll draft a local law and get it to you, then the board will have it in front of them in the July meeting, and we can talk about it more if they have questions. How's that sound?
Yep, that'll work. Meanwhile, you guys got another month to, if you got questions, try and come ask me or somebody else. I have talked to Randy Schell, I've talked to Bob Mullin, because I think Bob's probably going to be the next supervisor. And neither one of them had a problem with it. But I just, like I say, their budget, they got to know ahead.
I can't, I talked with Judge Scott, and I told her this could possibly happen. And she didn't really react, so I mean, I don't believe she, I know she knows we're talking about it, so I will say that.
Well, you want my opinion, and the next judge may not ask you, but I'll give it to you anyway. Is that if it's not paying for itself, then I.
It's not. Paying the money over here.
There, don't pay use to pay for itself, but from what I understand.
And it's gotten worse, the county.
There's a thing, you have to be careful bringing that up, because from what I understand in the law, it says that you can't judge a court based on revenue or expense. So it's supposed to be autonomous on whether it makes money or not. I was told this by an impartial judge from another town. I haven't actually seen the law, but I take it for what it's worth. That doesn't mean that I'm, I'm, I'm saying that I'm against moving the court. But I'm, I'm telling you what I, the way I understand it, that that's supposed to be a deciding factor.
That's not the main reason for.
I understand, I understand.
There are other things other than.
Does anybody here have any other unfinished business they want to bring up before we move on to maneuvering?
This is the crosswalk here, where we're at with that, remember with Craig.
Craig, where is he?
Hartland Downey, Paul Maldonado. He's looking into possible changes in the striding of the crosswalk, where we had a trouble there, and possibly.
Well, a change in the road striking.
Road strike, yeah. So basically, you wouldn't be able to move into that turning lane so quick, and possibly disallowing the left-hand turn into the common's area there. So uncongesting a little bit there too, so that's all we know about that, because it hasn't gone back to.
Right. He said it's got to go through a chain command, and they have to look at everything and work it all up, so it'll definitely be a few more months before we.
I know when we got the speed zone changed on Bostick Street for the school zone, it took about six months. Okay, new business, craft surcharges. April was $4,500, May was $5,000. We have a separate motion for April and a separate motion for May to approve those surcharges.
I'll make the motion to approve in April. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, for May's?
I'll make the motion to approve May, and I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Haven't put a number on it yet, for the detours, closing off North State Street and South State Street for the parade. And that would be. On July 20th. Have a motion for that.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then the village used the, removes our two-hour parking restrictions after 2 o'clock on the day of the parade. We need a motion to approve that for July 20th also.
I'll make the motion, I'll second.
All in favor? Standard work today in reporting resolutions for elected and appointed officials. We have to review, do, make a motion to accept this every year also. Hopefully, everybody's got a copy of that.
Make the motion.
Make the motion, Dan?
Yes.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have to recuse myself on that one.
I'm going to recuse myself, I'm on paper.
Did you get that, Wendy?
Yeah.
Okay, correspondence, Lewis County, Office of Lewis County Planning and Community Development, site plan review regarding the tug hill rollers. They approved it with conditions. Just notification for us. Just giving us a heads up that looks like there's going to be a rate increase this year. They're both retired, excuse me, they're both active and retired eligible employees. So that would be next year, January 1st. Yeah, yeah, for next year, starting in January. 2022. Just bigger information.
It's not going up 11.63, it's just going to 11.63, what does that mean?
What's going up?
Going up 11.63?
First time.
Good. Hopefully, that's not going to be that one. Got a letter from Jeremy in regards to the cream cheese festival. I know I talked with him, we have to do a resolution for them to close the street down also. Normally, we do that at our August board meeting. I told him that he needed to be in contact with Chief Rogie and our DPW superintendent. And he said he was going to make those contacts, so.
About the fire department?
Looks like they're planning, I have in their cream cheese fest this year.
What about the fire department?
The what?
They left it down here too.
Okay, they mentioned.
Yeah. Third paragraph.
I've got, got a couple of files ready up there. Does anybody have any questions on that cream cheese deal? Because Jeremy did contact you once already, didn't he, Randy?
Yes.
So, I mean, I'm doing everything, I think there shouldn't be any problems, there hasn't been in the past. I got two other pieces of correspondence here, one, I was able to make a copy for everybody. Get to that one in a minute, but the first one I got here, Wendy took a phone call late this afternoon from a Jane Hinckman. What she's looking to use is a Veterans Park on July 11th. From 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM, approximately 100 to 150 parents and children. Basically, want to have some games over there, and they'll have some food. She said they're not associated with the school at all, but it's just a group trying to get the kids out because they. She's willing to fill out all the paperwork, pay the fees and everything that we need. Because it's 100 to 150 people, basically need board approval. The governor has released everything here yesterday in the state, so I don't really see a problem with it. The only thing where it's a private group, I don't usually be asked for certificate of insurance, but I don't know how we can get a certificate of insurance on this one. I'd leave that up to Ben, insurance agent.
Well, you can get, homeowners, you can, they can buy a special policy for a day. Usually runs about 500 hours.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if anything happened, they fall back on their homeowners, okay?
No.
They can?
Because it's a special event, it's not under property. So the issue that you have is they could, they could approach an agent and describe what's going to happen, how many participants are going to be there. The agent would take it to the underwriter, and you can write a one-day policy, I say 500 hours. It could be less than that, but it's, it's not going to be, it's not going to be 25 or 50, or to add it to your homeowners. It's like if I have a wedding, I have to, I have to buy a special policy to do that. Special event policy. So I, we have to be real careful when we start along and happen in that park, because, you know, just. What, what's your opinion on it, Mr. Russell?
Um, I mean, I don't know, those are good, those are good concerns, but, um, I don't know.
I can tell you that a few years ago, Mark Turgut in their park had somebody on a swing, swing broke. And it was a huge lawsuit issue. So things can happen.
Well, I mean, you can certainly make that requirement, for sure, if it's, if that's going to be an issue.
And they signed off on it?
Yeah, there's no waiver procedure, there isn't that legally.
Okay, so, so they sign a waiver, and, and something happens. They don't have the paper for the insurance in front of them. Either way, the village could be involved in a lawsuit, but you're going to stand alone. So, and.
Yeah, and the thing, the thing is, a waiver may or may not do any good, but you're talking about village property.
Yeah, yeah.
And property, the village is required to maintain your.
It doesn't really matter if something happens, if a waiver's signed and there's a lawsuit. In my opinion. And so we're still, either way, we can still be held liable, but at least there's a layer there that we're not talking about right now.
If we say yes, free to get the policy, I mean, where do we go?
But we could get a, they could get a insurance certificate covering for that one day, right?
They can buy a policy, yes.
For 500 dollars?
Well, it depends, it depends on, they don't come for nothing. You know, I don't sell those kind of policies. You might be able to get it for 100, 200 dollars, but you're not going to get it for anything less than that. I tell you, most companies now have a minimum premium for any policy, you're right. So. So, you know.
Put it this way, put, put it this way, the absolute only way you can be covered is, in some respect, is to have the policy. That's really up to the board though.
How much coverage do we have to have in this policy?
You know, you can, you can buy a lot of, a lot of these policies, by the time, you pay the most for the first lady. So you could pay X amount of dollars for 500,000, and for very few dollars more, you get the million. And a lot, today, in today's litigious society, a million dollars is, is the going rate.
Well, I know our, our application, that they would have to tell all, all of us, like that application, that they have that proof of insurance.
Well, I'm getting that, you don't charge for the park, right?
We don't charge for the electricity.
No, we charge 25 dollars for the park.
Right, which, to cover the cost.
And 25 dollars for the electricity.
Well, but they're not.
And it's a whole harmless, that doesn't.
Whole harmless means, whole harmless means nothing, because still, hey, if they don't have a policy, we become first line of defense. I couldn't care less about a whole, whole harmless. Whole harm, they can sign that all they want, if there's a million dollar lawsuit, unless they got a million dollars in their pocket, we're the first line of defense, whole harmless or not. Would you agree with that, Mr. Russell?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're going to get, we're going to get sued. The whole issue is whether you've got coverage, if you do, fine, if you don't, because of the special event you probably should have.
Well, we can refer to our agent, Mr. Talbot, but he's, I know what he's going to, I know what he's going to say.
I mean, bottom line is, you've got coverage for the, for the park as a village park. So I guess the appropriate thing to do is to discuss it with your, your.
And I, and I'm sure that push comes to shove, we would have coverage, but my.
If there isn't.
My concern is, we, we require it from everybody else, like they say on the forum, we should require it from them also. And if they can get it, if they somehow can get it out. And if they can get it, if they somehow can get it out of their homeowner's insurance as a rider, good for them.
Why don't we do it this way? Is the board willing to approve it, that we get proof of insurance?
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll just, I got the lady's phone number, I'll give her a call and tell her what...
You said it was a hundred and fifty people, so it requires approval by the board, what's, what doesn't require, require approval by the board? Is it a certain number?
Just small.
Where you call, I mean, what's the number?
I'd have to look at the form. Do you know, number Wendy, off the top of your head, I don't.
Do you know who you're designating this as the, it's not a special event, they're just asking you...
They're just asking you, they wanna have games and food. I suspect what it is, they say they're not associated with the school, but I know last Saturday...
It's the fifth grade class at Lavo school.
I think it's just a bunch of parents getting together with the kids so they have some kind of an outing to end the school, even though they say they're not. Because I know last Saturday night, the senior class, the school had nothing to do with it, but they had their prom up on top of the hill there, where the old horse barn used to be there, and the guy fixed it all up, now it's a, a little fancy. And they, it was the parents that basically put everything together for the kids so they could have their prom, and they weren't associated with the school, but that was, they had a beautiful pile of...
They've got some sticky parts.
Uh huh.
If they came to the board, then was it, was that what they were about to add? Because otherwise...
And if we start turning our head, we'll have to develop more rules, because all of a sudden, gee, there was a party in a park last night, there was a hundred and fifty people there. You know, you have to, you know, I guess, where do you go?
I guess that's why I asked what number, that the board has to approve, that's why I asked that question.
I'll give her a call and, and basically, we'll just, if she can get us some kind of proof of insurance, tell her it's okay. If that's all right, there, because that's the other thing, we, you know, we have a policy in place, we gotta stick by it, pretty much.
Well, we force somebody else to do it through, so that's gonna, use the fire without permission.
Which brings us down to the one I handed out just before the meeting, this just came in fifteen minutes before the meeting. Letter from Lavo Academy and Central School. Wanting, asking the village, I'm requesting to you, request the help from village Lavo, their June twenty-six commencement ceremony. We'll be holding our commencement ceremony on the front lawn of the high school, starting eleven A M. Lasting approximately until one P M. We're expecting in tens of five hundred people for this special day. With such a crowd, we are wanting to provide a safe environment for guests, as we believe our guests may be potentially pushed beyond the curve of State Street. Knowing this, we are requesting State Street be blocked off at the intersection of State Street and Trinity Ave. And at North State Street and Bostick Street, if possible. We, if this is allowed, we'd like to take place starting at ten thirty A M. and lasting to one thirty P M. Number one, myself, I think it's a little late for us getting this information. Number two, they gotta go through the New York State D O T. And...
I was told that, that New York State D O T told them to just approach us, that's what I was told. That, because if we had, they had to approach them, it would take two to three months.
And the other thing is, they got that beautiful wall field down back, like, can they go down there? Why do they have to be on the front lawn?
Well, the other, unless I'm off my lap...
Where do they usually have the team members?
In the gyms.
In the gym?
In the gyms where, the, the plan, I heard out announcements that the plan is to have it outdoors if it rains, and that that would be an unlimited, well, they say five, up to five hundred people. If it goes indoors because of rain, then they're limited to two per grand, two people. So, the idea is outdoors to have more of a regular crowd. But with the traffic, unless I'm, I mean, North State Street to Bostick Street, I understand, but what if somebody comes down West State Street? Off in the number three road? Or do they go, you know, they're gonna have to block that, someone's gonna have to be blocked out there to put them on the Clinton Street, everything. Because otherwise, they're just gonna come into a, we're blocking that, and...
But I don't see how we can legally block off State Street without D O T's approval, that's my opinion. Again, you're getting into insurance, you know.
Yeah, this was a verbal, I mean, we don't have any written...
I think we should just refer them back to the State D O T. What do you think? Yep, chief, please sit right there.
So, I might be, I don't think it's a good idea, I don't like block rules, I don't like your cream cheese festival, I sure don't like it for... Our, because you're gonna throw out this quick, so they're gonna be associated, we're gonna have to get them out here to main the block pass. But again, I think you gotta go through State D O T, that's a state highway, and the other side, they gotta go through State D O T.
Because it really wouldn't affect us if they went Trinity to Bostick, they'd just be on the state highway. The only one that might affect us would be Waters Terrace over there. The people wouldn't be able to get off of that one.
And you'd have all those streets intersecting in that section, you'd have to reroute, reroute them, a physical barrier. There's a lot more to that, just not...
People think.
And the exit then, go through the D O T? Isn't the exit go, eh, go through the D O T then?
I think that's all we know, is that we gotta go through the D O T, we can't...
It's their highway.
Yeah.
Like, look at what it's gonna cross me for, manpower, bring guys in, set signs up. Is that what you think, Paul?
I think it's gotta go through the D O T first.
I'll give them a call, tell them our decision. Hey, Officer, committee reports.
Yeah, one other thing, though.
Oh, okay.
Actually, Dan spoke about this earlier. The email I sent out about shutting down Shady Ave, remember? That was a while ago. And that was just a general thing to feed out there, I, I know that, and everybody knows that they have contacted businesses and whatever. So, this is just something that came up again, probably gonna go nowhere, but I just wanna make everybody know that I'm not for it or against it or whatever, I was just contacted, so I should read it. And I did get a response from, I think, Joe and Dan, that was it.
I've talked to one business, we came here last year, I have to see them all, frankly.
Yeah, you can hear, uh, you're...
I guess my remark would be, for that person or whoever, whose idea is, I think that they should go, talk with all the businesses, bring back this, this stuff, and we can decide from there. We have the fire department here tonight, what, what is your feeling on it, Mr. Boston?
I think it's, I'm right there for emergency services, on the board.
Joe and I both talked about that topic. What about the cream cheese festival, we're on the subject.
Well, we've brought it in for years too.
That's like for years, that's about a fight for years, but. My way of thinking is, is the understand, is this, if they move forward with it, is it like they want it every weekend, right? Or every year?
No, I think it was like, once a month.
Once a month.
One, one evening a month or something like that. But, like I said, it was just thrown out there, it wasn't nothing to say, this is what we're gonna do.
It's, it's a lot to plan.
Yeah, there's a lot of planning that has to be done.
My real question is, where does the liability fall? And I'll bring it from a fire standpoint, if, if a building in that section that's closed down burns, who's liable, who gets the, hands to the insurance company when they come and hop in? Because the question will be, why was it closed in the first place?
Well, there's a lot of variables to throw out there, there's a lot of, and again, I was, I just threw that out there. Now, looking for a yes, no, or whatever.
It's, it's easy too to get portrayed as like, against something, but I'll just throw this out, just as a general statement. I was down with Syracuse a while ago, kind of my former life in politics, and Clinton Square. We don't have Clinton Square around here, but they had festivals and things all the time. There was a Polish festival, a German festival. There's stuff I think we can do if we use the right places.
Well, like...
And the planning, the, the planning, that's why stuff's getting canceled this year, because the planning, it takes a lot of planning. It's probably was canceled already.
Well, I suggested, if we're gonna be, we close up and build a park on four corners and use that.
Right, or, we have Parkway, Parkway Drive, that's perfect or something like that. It's not really traffic at all.
Behind the cops or something like that.
But if it's, it's the health of the product, how does that help the product?
Not really affecting traffic or anything.
Well, it's bringing in people outside the area, and then they could go there. We can't direct them to, we can't make them go a little west down, but we can encourage it.
I mean, the reason it was done last year, the main reason was until last year, was because of COVID nineteen. They couldn't have indoor dining, it was trying to help the businesses so people, if they could, you know, get outside. But now restrictions have been loosened up and they can go back inside.
It's pretty much obvious that at least a couple of businesses right there don't. Okay, yes.
He would have to, have to have more staff, because on a hot knife, they're gonna want to heat it inside. And if you, if you got a staff inside and outside, you need more help, and let you set up originally for it, like Tony Harper is. So, he said, Emerson said to quote him this way, if it was gonna be in front of his business, he was against it.
There you go. There's some feedback right there. Well, like, as I said, I think there's a place for something like that, and Paul said, it probably isn't right there to shut the street down. The only advantage to that is, and that was part of it before, that we opened up the alcohol and everything there, if you remember right. You know what I mean, where if you do it over there, might be different story, I don't know. Anyway, it's up to them, I won't get back to the person that...
They have approached the, 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 in the third part.
Yeah, all that to these.
Hey, village attorney, you have anything extra for us, Joe?
I have nothing else, Joe. No, nothing else.
Yeah, did everything I had. Wendy, do you have anything to the clerk cursor?
No.
Chief of police.
I have nothing, but I'll get your reports, they'll be in your mail folder, that's better, so. Super Denna?
I've got a couple of things. As you're all aware of, there was a water watch, not a warning. Our, our tank up on number three road was down to twelve feet. We are actually back up to seventeen feet, a little above seventeen feet. I'm gonna keep the warning on, we're gonna see how this week plays out. I'm sorry, I'm gonna keep the watch on, we're gonna see how, how this week turns out and make a judgment call probably Monday, whether we'll take that watch off or not. I'm just trying to be proactive. I don't wanna get into any situations that we have in the past, so it was... Other than that, I'm sure it might be brought up tonight, the fountain at Memorial Park or Monument Park is not up. There's a reason for that, when it was getting set up, we had a little incident where it actually tipped over and broke. The statue, or the fountain is probably, I'm gonna say, over a hundred years old, cast iron. It was a bear to take apart, and it was pretty hard to put that up there, so we have filed a claim with our insurance company. Research on new, new fountains, so we're in the process with that, as soon as we hear something from the insurance company, we'll possibly order a new fountain and have it up as quick as can be. Other than that, that's it.
Capital future plan, yeah, yeah?
Uh, I don't, I have a couple of things, I'll get with Tim, we can sit down with him, nothing right now.
Anything on personnel?
Yeah, and I've asked Tim to talk to Charlie about this, the police department has asked if we can start their contract for next year. And I've talked with Pam briefly, and Charlie and I, I gotta get a copy for Charlie, this happened last week, and I just had a chance to discuss that with him. It runs out, it's counting a year, they'd like to work on it, start it all, I don't have a problem, so I, Charlie, I gotta get, if you wanna see Pam in the morning, I need to get you a copy. I got it, you got it, okay. My news?
Last couple of days have been crazy for me, so I haven't done any audits, but I'll be in the next, if it's not tomorrow, I'll be in Friday to, for the office ones.
Yesterday, I was able to bring in judges.
Dave, Fire Department?
Yes, the Fire Department, as we know, we approved their, their budget figure. I'd like to say that for sixty thousand dollars a year for the village of Lavo, that figures out to a hundred and sixty dollars a day for fire coverage, I think that's very, very reasonable, and we should be thankful that we have that kind of coverage for a hundred and sixty dollars a day. Yes, I know there's other contracts with people also, but still, for those three thousand people to have a contract that costs a hundred and sixty dollars a day, big, is, is a good thing. I, I didn't attend their last meeting, but I don't know if Joe has anything he wants to add.
Um, just with the lifting of the COVID restrictions, we will, with the lifting of the COVID restrictions, we are gonna start having events again. We put a moratorium on, but anyone who wants to go weddings and all that are gone now, so.
When you were mayor, you used to say that the fire coverage cost a cup of coffee, now is it a...
That was the, that was the Police Department?
Oh, it's Police Department, okay. Sort of these guys, E cap, I think?
Or a slice of pizza.
Slice of pizza, okay, I like the way you think.
Anything on the Police Department?
No. That's like a price of a couple of dollars.
Listen, I mean, down today by everybody, and it's up to a fifteen ounce truck.
Planning zoning board?
I don't have any.
Municipal board?
No, I'm a two report. Pretty short, I think.
Town?
Well, they, they went through a bunch of stuff, just like we're all through right now, like the opt-out and things like that, and now they've got their filtration plant going. They're going pretty good. Talked about the...
County.
Wind project on number three road, we talked about that, so.
The county? I received a message this morning from one of the legislators that yesterday in committee, they have approved us to be forgiven of the sludge tipping fee, which is significant to industry and residential use in the community, so that's a, that's a very good thing. But I think that's six figures, you also got it, I was told that.
But what I was told then was, it went through committee, committee passed it, it's still gotta go before the full legislature board.
It does.
So, we're halfway there.
I, I'm very cautiously optimistic.
I was told that it probably wouldn't be a problem, but I think we're halfway there.
But, but I think the plug that we put in is that that benefits industry and everybody, and it, it brings the county to, they've done the right thing up to this point.
Well, they, they did some research, because I had a phone call from their attorney, and I had to go through a bunch of stuff with their attorney, and she was getting information from legislators. We had a couple of phone calls, I ended up calling Kevin, then getting back to him. So, it's been ongoing process for the last couple of weeks. But to say we're about halfway there.
That, I have nothing else for the town.
Recreation, anything there?
Nothing really new, somewhere that looks promising. I'll talk to Mr. Myers a little bit more in about an hour, there's some baseball game I have.
Yeah, because the town and village, we both approved it, I mean, if I, Randy and I, Randy Schell and I were talking the other day, we hadn't, he hadn't heard anything.
Him and I have to connect again. Yeah.
Or Danny, I mean.
Yeah, Danny and I have to connect again, and I'll try and, I'll see him tonight at the press game.
Anything on Racco?
Down for the summer, we don't meet here in the summer, so we didn't have a meeting.
Public comment?
How come I do all the talking, you used to be balling? Ball, ball, buddy, now. Paul, Paul O'Leary, Al. Don't give me Mr. that, you know me.
I look like my own.
Oh, that's a little shot. With the fair coming up, that means they're going to be striking Boswick Street. Have you had any conversation with them about they're going to be striking Boswick Street here within the next couple of weeks? With the fair coming up?
I haven't, but I can get to that tomorrow.
Yeah, if you have any influence, try to get it back to the way it used to be. I pulled up today because I was back in my driveway, so I had a chance of getting out. And almost got run over by a tractor trailer. Even without a tractor trailer, traffic coming behind me stops. Because if they go by me, they're on the double line without incoming traffic. So, I mean, if you've got any influence, it really needs to go back to the way it used to be, so we got that extra two feet, so we can get out of it, so.
I'll get in contact with them tomorrow, see what they do.
Yeah, that's it. I'm innocent of anything else.
Does anybody have anything for executive session? If not, I do ask, are you still with us, Joe?
I am.
I would like a short attorney client, executive session, if we could have a?
Sure.
Motion to go in the executive session?
Is it for litigation, possible litigation?
Joe? Attorney client, sir.
Yeah, but we got to tell if it's a litigation, if it's personnel.
Personnel.
For personnel. You got to make a motion, I'll make a motion. Second.
Call finger?